None, nothing, there we go. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for joining us. I think, real quick, I'll let the city clerk share a update.
Thank you, Mayor. For those watching at home, we learned late this afternoon, there's a technical issue, it's a spectrum issue that affects the sound on Channel 20. There will be no sound on Channel 20 tonight. The live stream is working fine, the Zoom link is working fine, so we encourage folks to observe the meeting that way. We've arranged for Spectrum to come out to the building on Friday to replace the device that's not operating correctly. And I want to thank the committee, the community member who brought this to our attention, appreciate him very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Swanson. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Morro Bay City Council and the Citizens Finance Advisory Board on Tuesday, January 23rd. And with that, I will ask the city clerk to establish a quorum and roll call, please.
CFA member Hoveston.
Here.
CFA member Johnson.
Here.
CFA member Dorfman.
Here.
And vice chair Woody.
Here.
And Chair Peck.
Here.
And on the council side, we have council member Burton.
Here.
Council member Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Protim Landrum.
Here.
And Mayor Wickson.
Here. So we're just missing council member Burton? Thank you. With that, I am going to start with the city manager Kimball. Do you want to lead off, or do you want us to do some introductions first? Okay, thank you. Thank you, oh, yes, and thank you. Mr. Conway, you want to set the stage for us?
Thank you, Mayor, yes, I'm Steve Conway. I'm the interim Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services Director, and happy to be here this afternoon with council and the Finance Advisory Committee. And to my immediate left here is Melissa Green, our senior budget analyst, who's going to be presenting today, walking us through the presentation, at least some, give some structure to our meeting. And so she'll be taking over, and I'll be here for questions and any further input, or we invite questions, you know, as we, you know, as we move through the process, we're here. And look forward to any questions you might have, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. And so today, the city council and the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee will be reviewing the scope of work and have a discussion on expectations, capacities, priorities, and hopefully we can come up with some direction that we can move forward with. Mr. Peck, did you want to start off from CFA? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We certainly have been looking forward to this discussion today. And on behalf of the mayors of the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee, this work session's going to go a long way in helping us focus our efforts so that we can help the city. CFA has undergone significant changes in the past few years, including a turnover in the membership and a modification of its duties by the previous council. Although the CFA members are relatively new, we share the commitment of our community, to our community, that previous CFA members have and will continue to have. Our duties used to be relatively expansive in the areas of public finance. As recently as 2021, CFA duties included review of the annual independent financial audit, the CAFR, 10-year financial forecast document, review of the annual budget and mid-year budget, review of the quarterly financial reports, including special projects for OPEB, PERS, council compensation, and others. Our focus has always been, and will continue to be, on the measures Q and E, with an emphasis on the annual city budget and capital projects associated with that. Our current duties include review of the annual revenue and expenditure report for measures Q and E, semi-annual revenues and expenditures under Q and E, and our presentation of the findings, as we're doing this evening, recommending approval of the, of that report. We are also to review the city budget prior to its presentation to the city council and make recommendations. Comparing this year to prior years, our activities have been relatively limited to the core functions above. However, two members of the CFA have joined with two members of the HAB to advise the city manager and harbor director on options for its lease management policy. However, we cannot report that we, that the CFA has completed other special financial projects. We hope today's meeting will provide some discussion about other ways in which the CFA can assist council. We also hope to find ways to make financial reporting transparent and digestible to the general public, and find ways of working with council and staff so that our role and function are constructive and substantive. It's worth remembering that the citizens oversight of measures Q and E was not a requirement of the state-enabling legislation, but was something that the city volunteered to make sure that the community continued to have input. We also have been using informally, but regularly, a review of the ballot measure and the representations that were made in the ballot when Q and E went to the public. This probably needs to be codified in the handbook, not as an absolute limit on council's discretion, but as a guideline for CFA to craft its findings and recommendations. We think what's presented by the staff report today is a good starting point. However, we don't see mention of a 10-year revenue and expense forecast for Q and E, and believe that's essential to completing our functions. CFA cannot perform its functions without that information, and there is concern that we may be overdriving our headlights. I would also propose that we look at having regularly scheduled meetings with PWA to review the status of capital projects, especially those funded by Q and E. A well-timed meeting with PWA would also identify area, item E in the staff report. Finally, we should identify special projects that should be brought to CFA for input and comment, including but not limited to the capital facilities plan, development impact fee update, the financial component of the waterfront master plan, and other financial components of the master plan. Those are just a few ideas to present for today's discussion, and we look forward to finding out how we can assist council in performing its functions.
Thank you, Mr. Peck, I appreciate you setting the table for us. And before we begin and start this process, I'm going to open, open public comment, period. Thank you.
My name is Homer Alexander. In my opinion, the scope of the Finance Committee's work should be expanded beyond the five recommendations that were included in today's staff report. Three suggestions. reinstating the review of the independent auditor's financial statements. For reasons that were never completely explained, the staff told the Finance Committee that only the city council would be reviewing audited financial statements in public in the future. If more eyes would have been looking at the audited financial statements of Stockton and San Bernardino, these two cities might have, might not have gotten into trouble. My second suggestion. The city council, at their September 27, 2022 meeting, established two 115 trust programs to help reduce the city's unpounded CalPERS liability, and to improve the investment returns in the city's two plus four, two-plus-million-dollar OPEB fund. Both funds are being managed by Highmark Capital, with US Bank as a trustee. Like all other financial managers, Hallmark Capital produces a quarterly performance report. These quarterly performance reports should be included on the Finance Committee's agenda for no other reason than to periodically review the asset allocation. My third suggestion is, in the event the city would plan to, on incurring additional debt, or would plan on financing the sale of surplus property, the Finance Committee should be allowed to review the terms of these transactions. Even though it's not included on the agenda, I want to comment on how the QE money is being spent. The main emphasis of both the Q and E campaigns was to support police, fire, and maintain our streets. To demonstrate my point, in the first year that measure Q was budgeted, 70% of the revenue went to police and fire, and the balance to streets and storm drains. In the current fiscal year, 32% was budgeted for police and fire. I would hope that in next year's budget cycle, the Public Services Department administrative expenses that are currently being paid with Q and E funds be returned to the general fund and replaced with police and fire expenses. I know this is pushing money around on a piece of paper, but at least the next budget would come closer to matching what the voters were told. The, how a measure Q was to be spent was clearly defined in Resolution 46-12. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Good afternoon, my name is Marlese McPherson, and I wanted to come today because I have been on both sides of this. I have served on the city council, and before that, I served on the Citizens Finance Advisory Committee. In fact, I was on that committee at the time that its responsibilities were first expanded from simply oversight to include some additional responsibilities, primarily looking at the budget before it went to council, and also coming up with a public-friendly budget document, which we did do. We were not always able to review budgets ahead of time, because there wasn't enough time to do that. So, and I might add that when these duties were expanded, we actually looked at other cities to see what they might have if they had Citizen Finance Committee. Most don't. We found one that did, and we contacted that city, and we learned about what they did. And we later contacted that city, and they had disbanded their Citizen Finance Committee. And they said it just didn't work out, it didn't provide the kind of input to council that was necessary and needed. So I'm just adding that as a little bit of background and context. My only suggestions to you are that you make sure that whatever responsibilities you give to the Citizen Finance Committee, they are capable and they have the knowledge and experience, financial experience, to be able to provide useful advice. And also that they understand their role in the process. You also have to consider the timing of when these things need to get done, and there has to be enough time for them to actually deliberate and provide you with the kind of input that you need. So you have to be realistic about what they can do and what they can't do to meet your needs, because it, you're, they're advisory to the council. And the other thing is that I would be flexible in, in coming up with the responsibilities, so that you can add if you need it and you have the time. So that's why phrases like "special projects," such as, or "additional responsibilities," such as reviewing the budget time permitting. So you just need to be realistic about what can be accomplished by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, CFA chair and members of the CFA. It's kind of funny being up here, usually over there, but just wanted to let the CFA know, so this is targeted at the CFA, that I have a quick WORF update. We are coming to a close on one of the main contracts for the WORF. That's the contract that built the sewer plant. The contract is with FELON, SBLK, and Vich. And I'm here to invite you to come to a Public Works Advisory Board meeting that we believe will be discussing this item on. We do have timelines on this that are a bit outside of our control, and so we are likely taking it on February 21st. Ideally, we would be doing a joint meeting with the CFA. We may be able to pull that off, and if we do, then there would be no need for you to come to the Public Works Advisory Board meeting. However, CFA does have another meeting already scheduled for that week where they have their own items to work on. And so I just want to put this out there as an invitation to come to the PWA meeting where you can make public comment, and particularly if there's a kind of financial items that you'd like to comment on, to inform the PWA. I believe that would be helpful to the PWA. But again, if we could work out a, a joint meeting in February before this goes to city council, maybe in March, then there wouldn't be any need to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Qualick. Anyone else for public comment? AGP, is there anyone online?
Thank you, Mayor Wickson. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. Are you ready? Councilmember Edward, excuse me, city manager Kimball. Is Mr. Conway going to lead this? Thank you. I'm not sure which way I'm going. Mr. Conway?
Actually, Melissa Green, our senior budget analyst, is going to start us.
They keep putting microphones in front of me. All right, so the, the purpose of this presentation is really just to provide kind of talking points for the committee and council. There's been some discussion of the kind of legislative intent of measures Q and E, so we wanted to put the original ballot language in front of you to review in light of today's conversation. It is important to note that while these, these measures were both advertised to address, you know, primarily the ability for the city to respond to public safety issues and emergencies, measures Q and E are a general tax and do provide funding for general city services. And that's in the ballot language for both measures Q and E. Next slide. Again, this is just providing context for today's conversation. The top quote is from the impartial analysis that was provided to all voters as part of their ballot in 2020 for measure E. Funds are placed in the city's general fund and may be used for any city's general fund purpose, including but not limited to. And then providing some context on the, the current scope of CFA as established by the ordinances that took effect with voter majority approval of measures Q and E. And as, as of, you know, as of today, the, the general scope of the committee is by and large review, and then making recommendations to the city council. Next slide. The actionable items for consideration, this is just a repeat of what is presented in the staff report today, and include keeping the, the core duties intact, but bringing, bringing budget process forward earlier in CFA's annual review. CFA is recommended to stay in further communication with the council liaison, potentially including review of investment reports at regular meetings, the PWA joint meetings, and then involving CFA earlier in capital project selection. Something that I've added on is wanting to make sure that you consider that there is significant staff time required to facilitate these committee meetings, and the budget cycle timeline, at least for this coming fiscal year, has already been established, and those dates are presented in front of you. This is something that, as the, the staff member, that usually is, is putting the most amount of time into preparing these, the materials that get presented to the committee. And this is my first budget cycle. I have six months tomorrow with the city. I just want to make sure it's, it's very, very apparent that I'm, I'm, I'm facing a huge learning curve, and we have very limited staff, and it took me about 20 hours to prepare for the last CFA committee meeting, and that was just my time alone. So I just want to make sure that while we definitely want to engage the community, and I am entirely open to facilitating the expanded scope of your committee, it does come at a cost, and if we can do it as efficiently as possible, that would be very helpful from a staff perspective.
Thank you. Do we have anything else on your end, Mr. Conway?
No, I think that one of the main things that I wanted to reiterate again, as we, we did hear from, we had a recent CFA meeting, and we heard from the committee the desire to be a little bit more involved early on, and so we're trying, Melissa, we're just hoping we can blend that in with some of the normal timing of the CFA meetings so that we can get, get, so we don't schedule too many separate meetings. So we're trying to consolidate, yet still address a concern that the committee expressed. So we're trying to fit that in as best we can, and that's our goal, and we're, you know, we're committed to trying to make that happen. And then we thought we would just, you know, we're here to-
Question and answer.
You know, question and answer, and, and see where it goes from here in terms of, you know, what the city's envisioning. I would comment that regarding, one of our speakers mentioned the audit. I certainly, you know, I have, it's been my experience to see audit committees formed to review an audit. It wouldn't necessarily have to be CFA, but, you know, that's a common, that's a common thing, and something council could consider, addressing one issue that I noticed being interim here, that there wasn't an established audit committee, and oftentimes, independent auditors request that, and it's a good practice. So, just my two cents on that.
Thank you, Mr. Conway, I appreciate that. And, you know, to that, I would share that last year, the finance director had asked me to sign off on that, and I hadn't, there was no review committee. It had been contracted out, and I think that that is an example of what I would have preferred when to CFA, rather than it be the council. And, and Melissa, thank you, I respect, and I think we all do, the challenges that it has put on with staff time and our limited resources, and hopefully this will help us to make our decisions easier, if we can incorporate some of these things with not necessarily adding more meetings, but just maybe some more information during those meetings that you have. So we are very cognitive of, of that challenge. I would, before we move into question and answers, I would ask council member Edwards is the liaison for the Citizens Finance Committee, so is there anything that you would like to share before we go to council and board members for questions?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I, I noticed a lot at the last CFA meeting on January 16th, and, you know, the unfortunate part of that, which you hit on, Ms. Green, is that, you know, we were missing our chair of the board, we were, we had two new people, and we had a vice chair that had some of the institutional memory of where we're at with this particular year's budget. And so it makes it complicated to try to, you know, have a group be able to review something and, and to deliver some valuable input that's constructive for not only staff to, to utilize, but also for council to kind of bite into, right? And so one thing that I've been coming up with after, after observing that, was that I'm, I'm coming to this thought about the onboarding process, and this, I'm going to apply this to CFA, because that's what we're here discussing at this moment. And the possibility of when they go through their application, the, the interview process, they come in, they, they sit down with city clerk, and they're given their paperwork, and go through Brown Act and all the necessary things that they need to do, that maybe there is some tweaking there that needs to happen. In other words, maybe to make sure that everybody has the same information, and literally on the same page, that maybe there's something like a joint meeting with the department head, the council liaison, the new members, and any other member that would like to kind of catch up or get a refresher. So it's one of the thoughts that is kind of mulling around in my head over here, to try to improve this for us and for other advisory boards and, and, and so.
Thank you, council member Edwards. And, and I think most all of us on council did follow the last CFA meeting. I know it was a challenge, also when you're bringing updates and you don't have the department heads who can answer those questions, which were some of the questions that were asked of you, and, and so I recognize that was outside of your scope of what you would know, and that, that may have created some challenges also. So we'll start with questions, and I'll let, I'll ask the CFA board members to go first. Kathy, do you want to start off, or do you have questions, or you want to wait and go last, your choice?
I just, one immediate question I thought of is, when we were just talking about the audit, what is the timing? I mean, I know the fiscal year ends in June, so I'm assuming the audit is at the end of the year, when it's completed?
Well, GFWA would, if we, we, the city of Morro Bay participates in the GFWA award for Financial Reporting Excellence, and they have a deadline of December 31st, so you try to wrap up the audit, in an ideal world, before the end of the calendar year, following the June 30 close of books. So typically, the audit would occur usually in October timeframe of the, of that calendar year, and then you would try to bring a draft. It's been my experience, early December, to an audit committee, and then hopefully have that, if there's, if there's, you know, if the draft is approved by the audit committee, they'll recommend that to council for approval sometime in a December timeframe. I know Morro Bay has typically, like, for instance, the CAFR has not been brought to council for last year because we've had vacancies in staff, some staff issues this year, but I, in a, I'm saying in a fully-staffed year, that would be the goal, yeah.
That was all I had.
Thank you. I'll skip you for right now and come back. Council, uh, member Woody? I was going to call you council member. Look into my lap?
No, no.
Give you a new job title.
I do not. My name was not on the ballot, in fact. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, it's an honor to have, to be here today, sitting with all of you today, because I know everybody here works so hard at what they do. To me, as your vice chair, what I have seen in my stint on sitting on CFA and going through a lot of this, is there just seems to be a bit of a disconnect over what is being asked for by our city council and even the city of Morro Bay. To give you an idea, going through the agenda item, and this is not unusual, but going through last month's agenda for the CFA meeting, the one business item that we did have, at the close, we were given a recommendation from staff to, quote, "receive an informational presentation," which they did an amazing job on, regarding municipal finances from the interim Assistant City Manager, Administrative Services Director, Steve Conway, and Finance Manager Emily Conrad, and Senior Budget Analyst Melissa Green. Now, this is not uncommon when we are given an agenda item that we, that we receive, in which we're almost not even clear on what kind of motion is the city looking for from us. And I say that respectfully, that we are more than happy to, or at least speaking for myself, to delve into the hardcore numbers over any of the budget issues, any of the issues when it regards to Q and E. But sometimes I feel like when we sit through these meetings, that we're all kind of looking at each other, saying, what exactly did you want us to discuss here today on this? Because we could go on and on, and I get the sense from staff that it's kind of difficult for them to really hone in on, what exactly are we asking CFA to do today? Are you asking us to, you know, as member Dorfman brought up, some interesting financial points last time. But as I sat there chairing the meeting, I kept thinking to myself, is this a path that you would like us to go down? And I know city staff was kind of caught off guard with some of the questions, not because of lack of ability, but because of lack of, there was almost a sense of, are we supposed to be going down this direction? Because at the end of the day, the mayor and the council really do set the perspective over what you need from us. We, I can, I'm pretty sure I speak for all five of us, we are happy to serve you, we really are. We just want to make sure we're doing what you're looking for us to do, and discussing the issues that you want us to discuss. And that really is, if I could sum it up in one little point, I would think that would be it.
Thank you. Thank you. Board member Johnson? Questions?
Not so much a question but a comment, which vice chair Woody had talked about previously is that we could either be a box checker on things that have already been done or we could set more of a proactive analytical, future-oriented role. So again, just need that specific linkage defined.
Thank you. Board member Dorfman?
I think the question of whether it's good to even have a committee, I think it depends on who's on the committee. And I also think as leaders, it's nice to have individuals who can be doing due diligence work without actually a lot of meetings. And I know, I think speaking for our group, we could come even more prepared, meet beforehand, things like that. So we're not so, you know, kind of sitting through everything without maybe having reviewed it as well. But so I guess my big picture thoughts are, excuse me, you know, one advantage in these types of financial situations where you're looking at these big questions is that having another committee gives you a point of separation. So something comes up, it looks great and then you're in a position to say, "Hey, this is great. Let's check with our financial committee." So I think that's, can be very valuable to have in the process. I don't know, I got on board with that whole vote for the home team and I just think that the more we can be integrated into the talents that we have in a community that's multi-talented and I think there's a vetting process that exists within the group and, you know, Morro Bay is at quite a juncture. So I think having, you know, people on your side who have been in the community and who are devoted to the community, like Woody said, I mean, will pretty much do anything. We're not even asking questions. We're, we're just so happy to dig into the money and the finances. Like, that's, that's just all we're seeing, you know. So I think having that kind of support, it can be very, very helpful. And I mentioned the other day that I think revenue solves all problems and I think we're not even at the tip of the iceberg with the revenue in Morro Bay and the kind of conversations of what our community can do relative to other communities that are like ours. We're not in a normal community, right? We're here on the coast, people are coming here all the time, that's not going to stop. So I think that, besides, I think reviewing the capital projects is a great idea. So those are kind of my big picture thoughts.
Thank you. I'm going to flip over. I'll let chair and myself go last. So council member Ford?
Thank you, Mayor Wicksum, and thank you Chair Peck for this joint meeting. It's so fun to see everybody all in one place. And as we were talking about earlier, it's kind of interesting how we're all, you know, scattered and it's great to sit next to people that I don't normally get to sit next to and to hear your brilliant ideas. And I, you know, I was reading through here and I know over time I've heard, you know, CFAC being concerned with the duties that they have, also hearing concerns from staff and hearing, you know, kind of overall just discussions being had. And I'm glad that we're actually sitting here and doing it in front of the public and all together. So I'm trying to think of questions and I'm trying to reserve comments, but questions, I guess, I have a, do have a question for Mr. Conway. You mentioned the idea of having a subcommittee for the audit. In, with, I know you've had a short experience here with CFAC. So do you think that it would be more beneficial to have a group that's already familiar with our finances and that's where, or at least becoming more familiar with our finance, financial situation, to jump into an audit versus having to create a committee to then have to get, you know, well-versed in what they need to look for in this audit? I mean, do you think it would be more beneficial to just hand over something like this to CFAC versus subcommittee?
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. So in my experience dealing with audit committees, it's run the gamut from, in some cities and places I've worked, the council appointed certain of its members as the audit committee. Say, three out of the five members were formally appointed to serve as audit committee members. I've also been in a city where the audit committee was, was a sort of a nomination kind of a process, members of the public and was a thumbs up, thumbs down vote by council members. Looking for people with financial experience, people that were used to looking at financial results and looking at audits. So that was one of the requirements for that position. So I've seen that happen. In the case that was just brought up by our speaker, you know, I think our CFAC committee has, obviously has desired interest in, and I don't want to speak for council, it's really council's decision, but that would also possibly be a solution because these folks have expressed interest in, in the financial transactions of the city and would already have some background. So that would be a plus, I would think. So it's really, but it's always been a council decision and you would, I would recommend that that would remain a council's decision. Staff could of course weigh in, but yeah.
Okay. I appreciate that, that answer. I do have one more question for now. The mention of having a joint CFAC and PWA meetings, I'm just trying to remember, like, have we had many of those or how long has it been since we've had a PWA, CFAC joint meeting? I just, I can't remember if we've had, like, I don't remember there being one, at least since I've been a liaison.
Yeah, I don't believe we've ever had one.
Okay.
As long as I've been here.
Just making sure my memory wasn't, I think I heard an answer in the audience. Yeah, same answer. Okay. That's all the questions I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. And I think to that, it's as our capital projects are evolving financially, I think that's where this has become a larger concern and having them weigh in. Councilmember Barton?
I wanted to thank the committee members for being here today. This is, and this is an interesting, in-depth look at how this has been going on and if it's working for us or not. It's intriguing to hear the different ways that you have seen it operate and whether, whether or not we should perhaps choose a, choose a style or what's going to be the way to go. I think that we are, we are changing as a city over the last couple of years. We've had a lot of turnover and it seems like that's adding an extra layer of difficulty to this. So anyway, I'm just, I'm intrigued to hear the proposals from the different committee members and I'd like to listen some more and see where this is all going.
Thank you, Councilmember Barton. Councilmember Edwards. I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tim Landrum. Our configuration's different.
I guess I don't, I don't really have a question so much as a thought that with, after our last meeting regarding short-term rentals, I just thought it might be, I mean, the outcome of that was that we were going to review the process, which would, which would include a lot of finance department work. And I was thinking that maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to have some of that work put onto, onto the CFAC advisory board where they could review, because I've discovered that, like for instance with HDL, they don't just charge a flat fee. There's all different kinds of other, other ways they get you, you know, like for, and it seems really very involved. And to really analyze that, it seems like that would free up a lot of your time and maybe that would be something that this board could help you with and do some of the heavy lifting for you. And I don't know, does that sound like it would? Am I right? Is that, would that be helpful?
I, I'm new enough where I would want to speak to our finance manager, Emily, and just to see her thoughts on that. I just, I'll be honest, I can't tell you for sure if that would be beneficial or not, but certainly we can explore it and we'll get back to you on that question.
Okay, thank you. Yep, that's all. Thank you. Chair Peck?
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've heard the range of comments from me and my colleagues on the committee. I think I'd just sort of like to summarize those in a couple of ways. One is this concept of oversight. I don't think we need to, I think we need to keep in mind that the Q and E were sold as, without a sunset, without a specific project list and with great discretion because there's an oversight committee. What oversight means is still yet to be determined. So we've always grappled with that. To me, what oversight means is that, are we delivering the services and the facilities in about the same way that the voters thought they voted for them? And I understand the idea that it's really all just tax money, but having been one that was on the E committee and how carefully that council crafted that measure, if we want to add things that are substantially different than that, then I think then there's a responsibility to either have the committee say, "We think that's kind of out of line" and let the council make the bigger decision. But I think the concept of oversight is really important and we need to spend some time on what rubric we're using to say, "This is okay" or "This is not okay." I'm also reminded after last CFAC meeting that when we get a report, we're looking at a report whose expenses are at least six months old and sometimes 18 months old. So that you're asking us to say, "So are these things that we spent money on a year ago, okay?" And it's kind of an awkward position. It's, "Well, no, those aren't. Recode them or don't spend those money." So I think what balances that out for me is that involve us more substantially on the front end so that you can get the benefit of those comments. And maybe we worry less on the back end because we've already been involved in directing that. So I know the concept of oversight needs to be given some, some good discussion. The other one is how these things are being delivered. I think you've heard some comments from the finance staff that this is a burden. This is unusual for a finance staff to staff something like this. I don't think we need to be a slave to the meeting times that we already have or that we can't break out a subcommittee of the CFAC to work directly with staff on this matter. We don't, we don't meet every month. We have kind of a rigid schedule that was determined long before I got on the committee, but there may be new meetings that we have to have. Certainly I like the idea that Director Quala came up with about having joint meetings. We have way too many silos in this town. We need to share some information. I know Vice Chair Woody and I have benefited tremendously from our interaction with the HAB members on the matter that we're dealing with for the city manager and the harbor director. We need to do more of that and so we can find some efficiencies there. And finally, I think that we need to have a good idea as to what are those items, what's kind of our general role and what are the specific roles? I mentioned the capital facilities plan. I think the city has a development impact fee program. Our role on behalf of you should be to sort through the knucklehead stuff that might come up at council meeting and to opine on those things so that what you come, what is presented to you is something that's a little more refined and vetted and you don't have to have all those hearings here. So I'd see our role as being one of refinement and vetting the ideas so that you have the benefit of that going into a meeting rather than having all of those public hearings and comments at the time of your specific consideration. With that all, listen to comments from the others. Thank you. Yeah, I think that part of what's been shared and trying to find the balance for staff, who's being held to so many standards these days of reporting and requirements, is how the timeline's what seems to be a lot of the challenges that I'm hearing from community as well as the advisory board, but then also from staff. It's like their timeline to make those commitments as Mr. Conway was sharing and their resources and time they have available. But then it creates a challenge by the time the advisory boards are getting it because it's after the fact. And so it kind of seems like, you know, the cart ahead of the horse. Definitely something I think, I see him over there taking a lot of notes. So I'm hoping that this is something we're going to continue to collaborate and work on and find some more efficient ways of doing it as we move forward. And I think that's part of the goal here today in doing that. And so I would be glad to switch over to comments before we can make recommendations to the council. If anyone wants to start with comments? Councilmember Edwards?
Mayor Wicksum?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify, I did not intend to imply that facilitating CFAC meetings are a burden for staff. I just wanted to encourage that the meetings are used in a way that feels more meaningful. The last two meetings, I'll just be frank, did not feel like time well spent despite the time that it took to facilitate those. So my recommendation is simply that within the existing schedule that we have, that we use those meetings to not only tackle what frankly will always be not terribly stimulating review of expenditures and revenues, but include additional content for those agendas that, that does satisfy the expanded scope that you're looking for while still keeping in mind that it does take us time to prepare these materials for you in advance. And then I also wanted to encourage that you consider the alternatives provided to you. In the CFAC bylaws, you can create subcommittees that don't need to meet in, you know, traditional Brown Act forums. They can engage with staff on specific items and that might be more beneficial in, you know, tackling some of the projects that have been assigned to us and providing additional review and support. Instead of it feeling like we're spending time preparing items that, you know, we present and you rubber stamp and then we all walk away and.
And I think we would, thank you for that. I think we would all agree with that because of some of the challenges. And I think as Mr. Peck shared, Chair Peck shared, that having that subcommittee has been beneficial. That helps us make our decisions easier and should help staff help us get to those decisions so there's less at the back end. And part of the challenge was, again, the questions that were asked of you, you weren't able to ask because you're not doing the capital improvement projects. So having those subcommittees really can help vet some of that out and the information will go a lot further then, I think. So thank you. Yes, I think we all agree with that. Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, comments?
Yeah, I think I just want to reiterate something that I said earlier that, and it is a matter of a timeline situation and being timely about it. More importantly, when somebody is on-boarded to a committee, that there is, you know, the steps happen in a way that, you know, that we execute that onboarding in a timely fashion so that everybody can get up to speed, including the liaison. And not just, I think that's important for the onset of building those relationships too, so that they can get their questions answered in a more timely manner too. And so that is something that has stuck with me since I started working with CFAC. So, and I just want to, I just want to say that my experience with this group has been wonderful. You are all very intelligent individuals who have great ideas and are creative. Woody. And I just think that it's been an unfortunate thing that I feel like I have, I have these people that are hungry to get in there and utilize their talents but just haven't had the opportunity. So I'm really hoping for that. And whatever we can do to move that along, I think is a priority for me. I also want to say, as your liaison, whatever I can do, and to staff, whatever I can do to help bridge the gap, I am more than happy to do. I'm saying that here publicly. So please take advantage of that because I think that I can be of help that way in terms of communicating information. If you simply don't have the time, I am happy to do that.
Thank you. Chair Johnson? Or sorry, board member Johnson, giving your title away now too. Have her have some coffee.
I don't have any additional comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you, Mayor. The comments that I have essentially are, you know, I appreciate the fact that our CFAK crew here, our current one, and I know past CFAK members are so hungry to help our community and our city thrive, especially financially. And we know how hard it is to get volunteers, and many volunteers volunteer for many things. And so I just appreciate that you guys all take the time to help out our city. My comment here is that I think that it is wise to consider the subcommittees, because I know that if we're going to add on additional responsibilities, I think we do, as Ben mentioned, we need to make sure that we're making the best out of our time, we're doing the best that we can. But I think a lot of work can be done in those subcommittees. And I saw a lot of like happy faces and head nods when that was mentioned, and so I hope that CFAK shares that opinion as well. And I do think that joint meetings between PWAAB and CFAK are, that's an exciting opportunity ahead, so I look forward to that as being the liaison for PWAAB to witness those meetings take place as well. Lastly, I had one more comment. What was it? Oh, yes, I most certainly am interested in the audit, whether it be part of the CFAK responsibilities or creating a subcommittee. And I appreciate our community bringing that up and hearing more from our staff on the importance of that. And so if it is, if it's, you know, recommended by our interim finance director here, I think that we should definitely consider bringing that forward. So that's all I have to say for now.
Board Member Dorfman?
I like the subcommittee idea. I think maybe as a community, we're starting to look at how we can use our resources, and again, how we can keep things closer to home. We have a pretty good pulse on our community, it's not that big. Just go outside and ask your neighbor what's going on. So, you know, successful communities take advantage of the talent they have, and communities like this that are surrounded by natural beauty tend to attract a lot of creative, intelligent people who have a lot of resources. And I think we've seen where we should utilize that.
Thank you, I agree. Vice Chair Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, to me, I see this a little more black and white at this point. One thing that I've heard during some of our discussions, water cooler discussions and whatnot, is this idea is that, are we truly a committee that is designated to look at strictly Q and E, or would this council like us to expand and to do a budgetary review of the entire budget? Now, the reason why I ask this question, to me, becomes a black and white question at this point, and not something so nebulous as, you know, I think subcommittees are a nice idea or something, is because I've heard this comment thrown around by everything from staff members to elected officials to even amongst our committee. If we're going to have subcommittee meetings, or if we're going to have staff bring us reports, or if we're going to meet with Public Works and all these other groups, that's fine. But the parameters are what I'm looking for. I need to know, do you want us to do it on the confines of just the Q and E finances? Or would you like us to expand into more of the general budget issue, into the whole general fund? Which is obviously two different issues, because what Q and E funds is one thing, what your entire budget funds is something completely different. And I think if we can just start with that basic concept at this point and get that one thing clarified from this council, believe it or not, that might help a little bit at this point for all of us, including our staff, to know that if we're going to have a meeting with PWAAB, Public Works Advisory Board, that when we walk in there, that we know that we're meeting with them to discuss the Q and E fund side of it, and not the entire Public Works Department itself. And that's something for this council to let us know, where would you like to see this go? And it would probably help staff too to know that, so that way they know what type of staff report and what we're putting together and what we're supposed to look at.
Thank you. Councilmember Barton?
It's interesting to hear how the conversation is kind of morphing in different directions, but it seems like maybe it's getting clearer what would be the most useful and best use of people's time and talent. So I think we're heading, heading in the right direction.
Thank you. Advisory Board Member Hoferston?
Yeah, I'm going to agree with that. I agree with Melissa, what she said about feeling like our meetings haven't really been productive. I know I have, felt like I haven't been, just because I was trying to figure out what we were supposed to do, and I didn't know. So that's why I was very excited about having this meeting, just to get some guidance. So, and it sounds to me too like maybe Steve was talking about, instead of doing things after the fact, if you will, before, so it sounds like maybe we need to be more involved in the budgetary side of it as opposed to that much later.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
Yeah, I like the idea of the budget, budgetary review. It seems like there's, the more oversight we have, and the more eyes looking at these things, the greater possibility that we could perhaps, you know, save revenue, which would free up, you know, that revenue, and maybe there's, you know, we could hire more staff and things like that to help. And so all of this is really positive. I like the idea of, I love the idea of the joint meetings with PWAAB. I think that that is critical, really. We definitely should be doing that, and I really like, I like what's been going on with the subcommittee with, of CFAK and HAB, and also I think Chair Peck's idea of continuing that with the waterfront master plan would, is a really great idea too. Let's see. What else do I have here? Oh, and then regarding the public friendly budget document, is that the one that's like, I'm not really sure what that is, and I just needed to ask, is that like the cartoonish one that is, is that, is that what that is?
I'm not sure what the context is.
Well, I mean, that was mentioned earlier in public comment, that there, we have a public friendly budget document, and I just was clarifying, is that the one that's like got little graphics and...
The digital budget book is most likely what...
Oh, okay.
...to you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Peck?
I don't have anything to add at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to all the advisory board members for CFAK and all of them that serve in this community. We're very fortunate, and I think, you know, some of the comments that, you know, Mr. Dorfman and others have made, all of you, is that you are the eyes and ears. You know, we ask you step up and volunteer your time to serve on these committees and these boards, and dedicate yourself to that, and that serves a purpose for us because it helps us in our decision-making. You know, and I will circle back again, just for simplicity, to the review of the audit. I can tell you from myself, with my time, I'm not interested in serving on that committee, and that's not my expertise. I want to look to members of the community who are sitting on this advisory board specific to that. And whether it's the board itself or a subcommittee, you know, is to be determined by the finance director, I would assume. What they felt comfortable with or whatever, there may be regulatory requirements, I don't know. And I want you to come and tell us you did it and give us that information, because that's why you're here. Not that in its sole purpose, but, you know, we have other things that we have to address beyond that in our job, not specific to just the finance. I think it's important to continue expanding opportunities for subcommittees and joint meetings, especially when we do start working on the waterfront master plan, because whether it's the Planning Commission and Public Works or Harbor Advisory, because it's land use issues, or most everything comes back to our budget and our finances and our responsibility, our fiduciary responsibility to the community, and the transparency of how those monies are being used, and helping CFAK committee or board, helping to guide us in those financial decisions. And I shared that before, that when Public Works meets, they're evaluating the project, and they don't consider the finances. The other night, there was a comment at Planning Commission, they're here to hear the project, they're not there to evaluate the return on investment or any of those other things. But when it comes to us as a council, we have to, we have to weigh out all those things. So it really does help us if you're on the front end instead of the back end. It really does. And so I see that as an opportunity, not looking to create more work for staff. Again, I realize that there are so many requirements, federal, state, government policies and requirements that exceed anything we could probably imagine these days for financial requirements and reporting, just because we know what's happened, as was shared, you know, by one of the speakers from other municipalities that went sideways. So I get that, I think we all understand that. That being said, I would be ready to provide some direction based on our staff report and recommendations, and unless somebody has anything else they want to add right now before that.
Mayor, can I ask a question really quick? Regarding the reason for budget not being brought to CFAK prior and having it after the fact, there has to be, I'm sure, a reason why it's been, I heard things said like, it's difficult to get it to CFAK prior. So would having a subcommittee relieve some of that pressure if we were to add this? I don't know what the mayor is going to propose, but if we do add that to the list of things that we want CFAK to do, I just, the reason I'm bringing this up is I just want to make sure, I hear that CFAK is interested in this, and I would love to have their input prior to getting the budget in front of us, but I'm just curious what those concerns might be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And, well, I really enjoyed the conversation that we have today, and it was, I'm new to the city, and just like Melissa, and so CFAK, we know, I dealt with CFAK a couple of meetings, and I know how smart this committee, just individuals in the community are. And there, yeah, if I can, I think I'm okay to say that, that I felt, yeah, they, the level of intelligence is intimidating sometimes, and I felt that I have to try harder in order to, in order to meet the expectation of CFAK, let alone City Council. So I wanted to tell City Council that you certainly made awesome choices, appointed these members on the CFAK, they are very intelligent individuals. And then that said, I want to go back to some specifics, because I heard during this conversation, the budget, this is going to be my first budget as well, and then coming from somebody who actually puts on ground, crunching numbers, Excel spreadsheets for budgets of different funds, I know how much time is involved into these kind of things. And then this year is going to be my first time, I'm very fortunate, the finance department actually here in Morave, I have staff to deal with that. I only need to just go review and then not actually work on the number spreadsheet and calculating and the formula and everything, whole of yard. I don't need to do that that much. So my point is that I, Melissa and I, and then a lot of, a few other finance employees on the team are new, so this is the first year. I am a bit afraid to commit ourselves to, hey, we're going to give you the budget, let's do that, and, and because I even did not feel that I had the time to go through the budget line by line, the way I like to see, which is more on a spreadsheet level of the details, rather than more summarized on level of detail that we see and that presented, like storytelling kind of budget that being presented to the public, which is the digital format, which is user-friendly, but for, I think what I gathered is that CFAK members would like to see more details. And in order to go, to go through the details, we, we need, staff here need to have, have some level of familiarity before we can talk to, before we can explain to CFAK members. So that was one thing. And knowing that a lot of us are new to the budget process, we thought the way to start it is to have CFAK join with PWAAB to look at the capital improvement project before the budget being released, so that that's a major QE. A lot of the, a lot of capital projects are funded by, by major QE. So that's a good way for, for the committee to get into it, to see ahead of time the budget. And then maybe in the future, once we get, once we get more familiar with the process, and also we are looking at field, the permanent finance directors, rather, director of admin systems and admin services, we're looking to field that position and permanently, and then we can, the team and I, one of our goal is to hire somebody, to find somebody who have the skills to communicate, to communicate at a level that, that, that CFAK can accept. So we are in the process of that, and then I think that's going, may change some dynamics, and so that's, that's, that's not going to come fast enough for this budget. So that's, that's this point. And on the audit, regarding audit, I felt that the audit, that's certainly, that's excellent idea, and then for CFAK to review prior to the audit being presented to the City Council, I agree with that. I also want to point out that the timing, again, is a timing issue. This year, the audit, fiscal year 2022, '23, which finished June 30th, and then we are still working on the financial report, the details. Even as a city manager, I'm supposed to look at it, I have not seen that audit to this date. So I am not sure, I am comfortable bringing this during, bringing this audit to CFAK for you to review, and then for you to go ahead to sum up or sum down. And there, a lot of times, like the, for example, the audit, there is a requirement, we need to get adopted prior to certain dates, so that there's some reporting, and there are things that state require us to report. So we, we may not have the luxury this year. What I would like to invite CFAK member to join me on this is that I would like to see, this would be my first audit, like get my teeth in the audit. I would like to invite a couple of you, if you'd like, and we can, we can review that together. And they, once it's, once it's released, and not to say that City Council not, not accept, because the audit is what it is. One independent auditor did their review on your last year's financial statement, they did audit, they're not, you may not agree how they group, group certain things, or, but they're, they're looking back, the money has spent, the year closed, money spent, you review that, give you an insight of how you wanted to perhaps guide your decision for the future. So it's useful to review already adopted or already prepared financial statements. That said, I... statements. That said, I myself learned a lot from reviewing, review and audit. A lot of people find it boring. I would say it's a lot of numbers. If you're, you know, it's not something that I probably want to read, you know, on the beach when I relax. But just imagine that, you know, that picture that have an audit report in front of you and you enjoy the ocean view. But that said, I'm just saying that once, this year, we may not be able to get CFAC to see the audit. But we hear you. And then this is something that I would communicate with the permanent, one of finance, the permanent Director of Admin Services and see how can we rope in CFAC for audit review in the future. And like I said, I'd be more than happy to invite some of you to review that together with me and help me to see, hey, what does this mean? You go find answers. So we can learn together. And that'll be very helpful for myself. So then I think we talked about the, some of the, yeah, I'm looking at my own notes, some of the timing, the timing issue, I think, yes. The timing, I hear CFAC said that expressed concern that a lot of the reports is already finished. And so then, you know, what is kind of late? That's kind of, that's finance. That's accounting. You look backwards budget, you look forward. So that said, is that I think that's the, the QEs, the major Q and major E's intention is that, or rather the language that I see in the bylaws to review. So that's kind of what you review, you would review what had happened. But now we just talk about the budget and then to take care of that, this year we want to start out with the PWEB, the joint meeting. So then you can get into the budget, the capital improvement project. Earlier, there was a question from Vice Chair Woody, as far as to clarify whether just to focus on QEQ or the entire, entire finance, entire budget, entire general fund. It's kind of related. But at this point, I would say, again, because I'm new, I just felt that I don't want to overpromise myself or my team. So let's focus on what the core is, which is major QE. And it won't involve other things. So let's, baby steps, once we have a time.
Thank you. Thank you, City Manager Kimball. And I think that we would probably all agree that any of these recommendations can be expanded upon as time permits. And I understand that probably having this meeting, this joint meeting right now is an ideal one. You know, Mr. Conway's here and rather, you know, a few months from now, we have a new Finance Director and you don't want to start all over again. So I appreciate your willingness to try and step in and answer these questions. And I understand, we do all, that, you know, this isn't your permanent decision. But thank you for helping guide us and, you know, Melissa also.
You're welcome, Mayor. I was just going to say that, and I agree with City Manager, that I think to address the budget, I was just consulting with Melissa and we, you know, I'm hoping that, just as a baby step that the manager talked about, that we could at least involve the CFAC in the, in how we're envisioning the prospective use, feedback from PWEB, obviously on the capital side, but how we're envisioning the use, general, the general direction and vision for Q and E for 2425. I think that's probably manageable for us as a baby step, but limited to that for right now. That's what I would recommend, just with my experience with the staff and what I know what the workload is in terms of the budget. And at mid-year, we would want to do that.
Thank you. I appreciate that and the honesty. And, you know, we have to make it work for everybody. And I think moving forward, the city manager is hearing the direction that the council is looking for in engagement. And we'll have the opportunity to work with staff and her team to see how we can start achieving some of this. Back to the question that Mr. Woody asked was, you know, about the Q and E and the participation. I think it begs the bigger question, but I agree with City Manager Kimball because we're already heading into this, that the purpose of Q and E is about the oversight, or of the CFAC is about the oversight of the Q and E money, the funds. It's been expanded, taken away, added things during the war, during the this, during the that. So it's kind of been at the direction of council through the years. I think we've seen things added and removed based on capital projects usually. And that seems to be kind of where the direction is of this. Again, I think it's really identifying as that is our largest expense outside of our full-service staffing is our capital improvements and the Q and E money. So right now, my recommendation actually would be to agree to and recommend the five recommendations that staff included in this to give direction and use this as a beginning, I think, of greater dialogue that will continue. I think this council is committed to joint meetings and working collaboratively with our advisory boards, ourselves, along with you interacting with the other boards. I think I agree with Mr. Conway's comments about, you know, the opportunities for the mid-year as we're moving through this. And the goal being, over this next year, allowing the city manager and hopefully the more permanent Finance Director the opportunity to get through this budget. And as we transition into the next one, being more proactive about that participation and CFAC's involvement in it. And I would hope that, you know, I don't know if you have something you want to add. Chair Park?
I think those are all good recommendations, Mayor. And I think one of the things that I can do in my role is to be more proactive in working with staff on agenda prep. I know that we go into meetings with questions and it's not a good use of staff's time to try and answer every question that might come up. At the same time, I know the members that I work with are probably looking for a little deeper analysis or information and probably some stuff can fall off the table, is not relevant. But I think I probably need to do a better job of sort of framing the question that needs to be answered at the meeting. An efficient meeting is my goal. So I can do a better job in working with staff. And I think one of the things that we can do better is to, you know, probably not be a slave to the exact meeting decks we have. We go a whole two or three months without a meeting when business is going on. And I also see that we can have individual CFAC members take responsibility for a certain set of departments or a department, they can come back and report. So we're not all doing all the work. So I think there are ways we can get this work done more efficiently and more substantively and help the council perform its responsibilities.
Thank you for that. And, you know, that's the same shared with us. And the more questions, and I would encourage that. And we're all on a learning curve too. I'm learning everybody's names tonight, I guess, over. But, you know, the more we can ask our questions of staff ahead of time helps for a smoother meeting, especially for your advisory board because they're not making those decisions. They've already been made along the way and they're just getting those financial reports. So, you know, asking those questions through the city manager, the Finance Director, or those departments, I think might help with that process too at the meetings. I know for us, it does. If we ask our questions ahead of time, we have a more efficient meeting. Yes.
Since we're all here in this open setting, I thought I would ask, I've had different times where I've had to, I've wanted to get information from Finance. And it's, my experience, let me give you a little background. My experience is with like QuickBooks where you can put in a vendor and it will tell you, you know, how much you've spent with a vendor. And I understand it's not like that here. And I'm just wondering if there's an easier way to go, like to help, to not use so much of staff's time. Is there an easier way to let people know how to ask for information? That, you know, because even if you did a records request, it would, I don't know that you would necessarily get the complete information. Like, for example, HDL, I'll use that again as an example, because there's so many different ways they charge. So how would somebody go about getting information from Finance?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So, you know, we do have, as you mentioned, the public records request, which is a little bit more of a formal, and the clerk could comment on that, more of a formal process where, you know, there's certain timelines set to get the information back to the public in terms of any of the specific requests they have. And it depends on how, I guess, the level and detail needed. If it was fairly complex and detail needed, I would recommend a public records request. If it was something staff could answer quite readily, I don't think the public would need, they could contact Finance, be happy to take their calls. We have public numbers available and we would do our best, you know, if it was a simple question about, I'm having trouble with HDL or whatever, we're always willing to try to accommodate the public in that regard. If it's a fairly, you know, I need a 10-year history of, you know, my, you know, those kind of things, that would, I'm just saying from my experience, that would probably be a public's records request because we would need to get that documented on, kind of on the docket and know that we had a timeline to get it back to the public and that sort of thing. But if it was something we can handle, that's not going to be burdensome, we generally try to turn that around right away. Just contact Finance, ask for Steve Conway.
Thank you.
But I may not be here.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. So I think that, are we in agreement? Do we, we don't need a motion for this. We're just giving direction, recommendation, correct?
As Chair of the meeting, if you believe that there's a consensus for these five, then that's fine. If you want to ask the other council members to bring back a resolution with these to amend the bylaws, that's another route, number of options.
Yeah, I don't think we're looking for a resolution at this time. I would look to the council. Are we looking for a recommendation at this time strictly? Or do we want to go beyond that at this point? Recommendation? Is everyone good with that?
Yeah, I think I'm good with that. And it sounds like you've already put forward a recommendation to...
The five items.
For the five items. And are you just kind of looking for like a head nod from all of us? You're getting a nod from me.
Thank you. And then we would include the city manager to, at the appropriate time, reach out for a subcommittee from CFAC members for reviewing the audit and then expanding on those other items as time permits, allowing you the opportunity to finish transitioning.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to clarify, the audit would be afterwards. It's not, I don't want the CFAC folks to think that you need to review it before. I don't, I will give a try, but I don't know if I can deliver that. So...
Thank you. Vice Chair Woody had a question, comment? Go ahead.
Yeah. Real quick on this, on these five items here, and this goes back to something that was at the core of this very original meeting, which is item C, for example. CFAC could potentially review the city's most recently prepared investment reports at its regular meetings. Okay. This goes back to the most common question that we on CFAC and I personally have always had. If this council would like us to review the city's most recently prepared investment reports at its regular meetings, that's fine. But what recommendation or what do you want us to do after reviewing these reports? Are you looking for us to say, we think that the spreadsheets work? Are you looking for us to say, this is a nice report? I mean, and I don't say this sarcastically to everybody in the room, but that has been one of the core problems going back to our CFAC meetings, which is, you know, we end up with an item that says, review these reports. And we sit around for an hour, we review these reports. And at the end of the meeting, we all look at each other and say, I think there's a motion. I think there might be a motion. Or we're not really sure what we're trying to tell staff to do. I mean, so let's start with this one, which is, if we're going to review the investment reports, what would you like us to do after we're done reviewing them?
Thank you.
Yes. I would like to, I would like to share some of my thoughts when I suggested this as one of the work products. Typically, when investment report would be reviewed, I think what Finance would be looking for is, the committee members would be able to look at the structure of the investments, how are they, the type of risk the city's taking with the types of investments the city's making, number one. Number two would be balancing the, making sure that the cash and total cash and investments has been reconciled to the city's books, which is something that's very important. And it's just something that, it's just a box to check off, but that's very important. Maybe discussing strategies. We think, you know, a chance for input on strategy about future investments when they become, when they mature, how long should we go out? Now, most city, California governments are limited to five-year maturities. But, you know, you could, if you really felt, if the community and the committee members felt strongly that, I think we expect interest rates to rise, then you might want to advise council, we should really concentrate on more of the shorter-term investments for the next year or two and then extend out. Or it gives staff a chance to say, we hear you, but we think it's wiser to do a laddered portfolio or that sort of thing. Just some dialogue about investment strategy, I think, is really helpful for staff to get that feedback and buy-in from the committee. So those kind of things.
And that works. And everything that you said on there, that's exactly what I think would help in the staff reports that come before us that say, here are the three or four things that we need you to review. Here's your staff report. Have fun reading it this weekend on the beach with Yvonne, who will be there with your reports as well on the beach with us. And here are the three or four things that we're going to be discussing that we're looking for your input on. Those are the types of things that I think are missing in our presentation before CFAC, when we all get into the room together, is what exactly are you wanting us to do when we review this? Or when we get together with, now supposedly with the Public Works to talk about, you know, any project coming up? Great, we'll all get together in a room. But at the end of the meeting, what input are you looking out for from us? And that's really the big key of it.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Woody. I think that's great. That helps staff also as we craft our reports to give a little bit more, more clear direction about what we're looking back from the committee to provide to us.
Yeah. And hopefully we can take the workload off of Melissa's desk. That's the biggest thing. I feel bad for her right now.
I just wanted to see how, how can we make this February meeting with PWEB happen? Let these guys get in there with you.
I think a lot of times it's about scheduling for staff and availability of the advisory board members too. So, but, but I think that this gives us a direction moving forward so that we are being cognitive of our Q and E funds and how they're being utilized in capital projects and giving CFAC an opportunity to let us know through our liaison or individually or however you want to report back where you maybe see things prior to them happening or the intent, or can advise these bodies. You know, you understand the budget. You see the budget. You participate in Q and E. The members of PWEB Advisory Board see the project. So we need to connect the dots to make sure that, you know, we're finding the balance and the funding, especially I think as the concerns, you know, we always hear each year, well, we're going into a flat budget, you know, a flat year with the economy's not going to grow, the costs are going up. We're all trying to be aware of the inflationary costs of our capital projects especially. Everything, you know, to talk to the Public Works Director, you know, whatever cost last year, it's, you know, I mean, I'd just say double, whether it has risen, but it's risen the cost. So trying to manage that along the way and finding the best balance, I think is important. And so your input helps us for council and the decisions. So thank you.
And as long as when we have the meeting with PWEB and Public Works and whatnot, I would say the biggest thing on that agenda is make sure we know why we're there. Because we've all had to deal with those long meetings where we said, what did we do today? We didn't accomplish much of anything. And meeting with Public Works to go through the finances on that with a joint meeting, that's fine. As long as there's something on that agenda that says, at the end of the day, here's the input that we need from you guys. Because I think that's what's been missing in a lot of this.
I think there's a disconnect too. And part of it was noticed at the last CFAC meeting when, you know, the Finance Department isn't always able to answer the questions and so... And so public works is looking at prioritizing their projects and things. So having an understanding, I think, for C-FAC of how the capital projects are being determined and those funds helps you too. So I think it's a two-way street. It's not just about public works understanding the finance, but it's about finance understanding how public works projects are being prioritized and trying to find the balance, I think, with the costs as we move forward. And your input, you know, helps with that, keep us moving in a good way. Yes, Mr. Qualick?
Thank you, mayor. I'd just like to make a quick comment. The meeting, the potential joint meeting, or maybe just a P-WAB meeting where you're all invited to come comment, that meeting is going to be specifically about one contract closed out for WORF. But I do want to also let you know that in March, we're planning on coming to, we're planning on organizing a joint meeting between the P-WAB and the C-FAC on capital project prioritization, as has been discussed, and also the water and sewer rate study. And so we obviously will welcome your input there. And I'll just express very briefly to board member Woody, that, I mean, this is a common frustration, I think, that you're sharing, that I've seen in different cities I've worked for, for advisory boards, it's sometimes just unclear what the role is. But I can share that with P-WAB, we often present to them what we're working on, and seek out their input based on their expertise. And, you know, ultimately, it's a C-FAC's job, just like the P-WABs and the other advisory boards, to guide the city council, not so much staff, but again, to give the city council that confidence that when they're making a decision, someone else has already looked at it, that has the expertise. And so sometimes that is a bit of a gray area, and it's the same thing we deal with P-WAB, it's like, well, are we making a recommendation to city council, or we, so I, you know, I look forward to talking with Mr. Conway about that and how we could better kind of word that. It's always been a bit of a challenge, but I'm sure we'll get there.
Thank you for that, Mr. Qualick. And again, thank you both, to both of you for being here, and I do know we're taking you away from those other topics, but thank you, I really do appreciate it, and we all do. And with that, I am going to move for adjournment. Thank you.